Call it best, the better way to present this to the voters. So, keeping that in mind, I guess I would like to start dialogue. Just, what's your thoughts, first of all, on the timing of the bond? And I'd like to facilitate like we did previously, so I'm gonna start on my right. Kayla, could you care to express any perspectives on the timing of the bond?
On the timing specifically? So, I know in our budget meetings, we did discuss that our INS budget is already at a deficit, which means the taxes we bring in are not enough to cover our bond payments. So, I fear the timing is not fiscally responsible at this time to call a bond when we struggle to pay our current bond debt. The budget ending June 30th, there was a $347,000 deficit. I know that moving to a June year end and shaving two months off of our budget makes us appear to have a surplus, when in actuality, there is a deficit. It was asked by Terry in our budget workshop on June 16th, what happens when our second bond payment of the year in August is outside of the current budget scope? Spencer said it will be accrued later in the year, and that going from 12-month to 10-month budget made us appear to go from a $1.7 million deficit to a $1.8 million surplus. That will not be the case next year when we go to the full 12-month budget. How can we take on more debt when we struggle to pay our current debt? Currently, Godley ISD has $225.5 million in outstanding debt principal, equalling $83,507 per student. Yes, I understand that several campuses are in dire need of repairs. Why in the 2021 bond were these cut due to COVID escalation, but no cuts were made to the Wild Stadium or Pleasant View? There seems to be a lack of priority in budgeting for these repairs, and so that's my concern with timing.
Spencer, can you give us some clarity on the INS deficit, please?
While you're there, can you answer any questions about us being able to pay our bond payments? To just speak to what Ms. Lang said?
Absolutely. Absolutely, good, you're important. So, first of all, as it relates to the INS, we've had multiple discussions about this at prior board meetings. The question was asked multiple times, and the answer is gonna be the exact same. That is calculated in when we sold the bonds originally, we were utilizing the funds that we were going to receive to help pay it off quicker. And so, by us utilizing our fund balance instead of just sitting in the mink of Godley, or actually utilizing it for the taxpayers paying bond debt off early. So, in relation to a couple of other questions, the, yes, it was, we did go from the 12 months to the 10 months, but by no meaning was this manipulated, and I think was called extortionism by yourself. Absolutely, that's not been the case. It's actually a use of our financial capacity to be a healthier subject as a district. And so, over the past two years, we've actually increased our financial capacity. We hold three different Texas Transparency Stars, two of which are related to debt service and traditional finances. So, stating that we are bankrupt is factually incorrect. In addition, the COVID pricing, so there's this item in bonds called escalation, and escalation is around 8% to 10% each year. And so, when projects are delayed, like they were during COVID, COVID pricing went up 20%, and then escalation was going up 8% to 10% there. So, unfortunately, yes, there were projects that needed to be cut, that were at the back end of the progress. And so, we'd already started and we're almost all the way done with the completion of those items for the arena, for the Wild, and for Pleasant View. And so, the items that were at the end, those were ones that were left off. In addition, wanted to talk about the, you brought up about our debt per student in comparison with some other districts. Yes, that is true. So, the Texas Bond Review Board has some good information out there, and I think that's where individuals in the community have gone out and looked at this information. But that doesn't necessarily give the whole picture of the nine districts that we're compared with. Four of them are declining districts, so they're actually losing. And then, the other five haven't grown more than 10%. Godley ISD has grown over 36% in the past six years, kind of looking at the same calculation. So, when you look at just a specific piece of data, it doesn't necessarily tell the whole picture. But if you do look at districts that are like us, as an example, Gerald ISD, Saline ISD, Community Northwest, Crowley Crossburg, Hutto, Argyle, Georgetown, all share the same thing that we are, a fast-growth district. Those other nine, none of them are fast-growth districts. And I think, I think that was all I wanted to throw out.
Have we missed any payments to our bonds?
Nope, no payments have been missed, they never will be missed, so.
And if I was a member of the community and I wanted to go and look at that myself, where would I be able to see that we are not missing bond payments and that we are paying them on time and actually from what you said, above what we owe?
Yeah, so all of our information has to be published through Debt Transparency. So, that has to be posted either to the Controller's website or to our website. Since we have that Debt Obligation Transparency Star, you can go to our website and all of that information is there.
So, why don't we give others an opportunity to?
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just respond to something that he said? I never use the words bankrupt or extortionism, so I'm not sure where you got that. But my concern is, is it best use of our fund balance, which is essentially the savings account, to pay bond debt? When the INS budget and those taxes are supposed to be utilized for making those payments? And then, also, moving from a 12-month to a 10-month budget, that's not gonna help us next year. We still have a 12-month cycle, or just looking at 10 months versus 12 months.
Yeah, you're correct on the aspect that we're utilizing the fund balance. So, the thing about INS fund balance is that you have to use it to pay INS debt. So, there's two different buckets, we've talked about this. The INS bucket has to be used to pay off bond debt. The MNO has to be used for all other things. So, by default, we are utilizing the funds from the community. As it relates to the other question, and it went off the top of my head, what was the second piece that you had?
The moving from 12-month to 10-month budget.
Yes, yeah, so moving to the 10-month and 12-month, we've actually approved, well, actually, I think you did not vote to approve the budget for this 25-26 school year, but in that 25-26 school year, it was a level budget for MNO.
I'd like to move along. Jenny, you have some perspective on the timing of a recommended bond?
So, I mean, I look at this a little different. I try to, I try to apply common sense. I just try to look at it, and when you look on paper, obviously, we've got, you know, we've taken on some debt, and, you know, it's thrown out a lot. The debt per student is obviously high. So, I start thinking, well, how do we get here? How do we get to this point? And when you look in comparison to every other district, no other district in the state of Texas with the amount of facilities that Godley ISD had took on nearly 40% growth after the largest surge of inflation the country's ever seen. Like, that's a stack, that's not an opinion. So, I guess you can think, well, how could we have changed that? Well, I guess we could have approached the voters back in 2016, 2018, and asked what facilities we didn't need. That didn't seem responsible. So, it's unfortunate, you know, that we experienced the largest surge of growth in comparison to other districts with the amount of facilities that we had at a very, you know, just the poor timing. So, timing was the topic of your question, so that's, you know, that ties into that. You know, in listening to some of the, you know, even some of the speakers, you know, when we, when we talk about, when the speakers mentioned to say no to a want, I don't, I didn't, I didn't see any wants presented. So, it seems easy to, that we don't have any wants to say no to. So, I'm glad that was said. Terry?
I am looking at this from, in the mortgage business, and we have the capacity for $120 million. What does that mean? That means that that's what we can afford. It's any person that's gonna go out and buy a home usually doesn't have cash to pay for that home. They get a mortgage. Essentially, that's what a bond is, asking our constituents for us to borrow money to build or to maintain our facilities. And so, if someone came to me wanting to buy an $800,000 home, and they could only afford a $250,000 home, they're not gonna get a mortgage for the $800. The bond capacity allows us to borrow up to $120 million. We have the capacity to pay for that. It would be against the law to go out and sell bonds that we didn't have the capacity to pay back. So, I think it's important that we are able to maintain the facilities. We pride ourselves on maintaining beautiful campuses and facilities, and our kids need a safe place to be, and I think it's important for us to call the bond.
It works so good for you in the mortgage industry.
You speak about timing, I think about, is it the right time to put it on the ballot to give our voters a chance to speak? And I think it's always the right time to give our voters a chance and our community a chance to share what they feel about. I know not, but just a few months ago, I really wish that the, our representatives at the state level would have given all of the people in the state of Texas a chance to vote on some, some things, and they didn't. And so, I think it's our responsibility as leaders to bring this and put it on the ballot and let the community and the voters decide if it's something they want.
Thank you. Jenny?
Hi, I'm Krista, and if now is not the right time, the right time, when is the right time? The further you push it out, the more money you're gonna be asking for, not just in what is needed for repairs, but the big E-word escalation.
Simone?
Anyway, I would really agree with the majority who has been set up here, that it's, you know, we need to give the option for the community to vote. And I know, I, Jamie and myself sat on the long-range planning committee and listening to Ms. Pinkerton talk about the mold that's growing in the classroom that she's in every single day. And my student is now a seventh grader, and I'm thinking, those long-term things, we can't, we can't sit back and wait on. We need to handle that, and like Jeff said, these aren't really wants, they're needs. So, we need to handle our needs.
Thanks everyone for that. So, I guess the second question that I would ask, again, lots of discussion about the timing, and Terry touched on, is the amount. How do we, what amount do we present to the voters? Obviously, there's recommendation, so again, like to give opportunity. And Kayla, if you have additional, I realize you've expressed an opinion about it, but I'd wanna give you the opportunity to speak on an amount, if you care to.
I have no comments on the amount.
Fair enough, thank you. Jeff, any comments on that?
No, I think the committee did a good job, you know, trying to prioritize those, those needs. And, you know, it sounds like a lot of it's renovations and additions to our existing facilities. There's not any new shiny, you know, anything being presented.
That's because we've already spent that money.
Terry?
Instead of fixing.
I think the, and I thank the bond committee too for their diligence in going through the list and kind of assimilating priorities there. I think it is important and out, even though that I'd call what we're wanting is as renovations more as, as facilities maintenance and upgrades. I mean, if the AC is gonna break, and there are some that are not working, the roof is leaking, I mean, that, that's a health issue for our children and our schools, so we need to get those fixed.
Krista?
I think the committee has done a great job, and I think they kind of did a lot of the hard work for us. And if our capacity is $120 million, I think they've done a great job trying to utilize the capacity that we have to, you know, our biggest benefits and addressing our, our needs. I wish we had a chance to address some of our growth issues other than, you know, the biggest need of the, the capacity at the middle school. But I think that we really need to tackle some of these really big maintenance concerns that we cannot do out of a normal budget.
I agree, we did focus a lot on the money, and I think everyone that was on that committee would choose the higher amount. But we went and pared down to what was really needed and came to the agreement, obviously, that this is what we believe the community would support.
I'd like to use the word bare bones, it's really bare bones.
Simone?
Again, I'll second what Jamie said as far as we really worked hard to focus on the bare bones needs. And I mean, I'm in the construction industry, and I can tell you, nothing's cheap. I used to sell campaigns and they're $15,000, like, and that's one single thing. So, renovations, HVAC roofs, like, it's not cheap anymore. So, but the longer you wait, the more things it's gonna be.
Okay, thank you. So, the other question that I posed a minute ago is that if we choose to go forward, how do we wanna package this for the community? And specifically, I'm thinking of some of the discussions that we've had in the past around a single proposition or multiple propositions. So, again, we'd like to have some dialogue on, in that area. Before we get too deep into that, Dr. Deere, do you have some, some discussion of pros and cons? Is it different? Okay, so, Kayla, any, any thoughts on a single prop or multi-prop?
From what I've heard from the community, they seem to prefer multi-propositions, to have multiple options. That's just what I've seen being talked about.
Jeff?
I would have to concur.
I'm on the opinion that I agree also with the multiple prop. I would like to hear if any of the bond committee or long-range planning committee people have an opinion. I'd like to hear what you guys think about one proposition versus multiple. If y'all have any thoughts on that?
If I can ask, let's, let's finish going through and round the board members, and then we'll certainly give any of the committee members an opportunity to provide their input. Krista?
I was of the same thought, I wanted to kind of know if the committee had discussed that and what the general consensus was from the committee. Looking at what they've already presented, would we vote tonight? I have a question. Would we vote tonight and say, yes, we want a multiple props? Or do we decide tonight what's gonna be in multiple props if we do that? Is that?
We would need to decide tonight on whether it is one or multiple props and what would be in the props.
And what we pull out.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Jane?
Personally, I prefer a single, simply because I think it could be confusing to the voters who may not understand that they can vote for one or multiple items on the ballot. And also, if something, if you, depending on how it was broken down, you could possibly run the risk of not having money for future use based on escalation, et cetera. So, I would prefer a single.
Simone?
So, I am of the opinion that the community wants multiple as well to kind of piggyback off of Jamie and after further investigation on multiple versus one. I, I support either way. I think we need to put something forward, whether it's multiple or one, whatever the majority is comfortable with, I would support. But I will say, I think if we do multiple propositions, I think that what Jamie said, there is potential for some that are not as familiar with the process to maybe not vote for all of them, even if they support all of them. And it also, I think, pigeonholes the money and how it can be allocated. So, you know, if we break it up in certain sections, and one of the propositions maybe comes in under budget, but another one needs a little bit more over here, I think that, not I think, I know, that you can't move that, like, you have to follow where it's gone. And so, having it in one, I think, allows kind of grace for escalation on specific projects or, you know, the need to maybe have flexibility in those things. So, for that reason, I personally think one might be the better option, but.
Those are good points, those are good points.
Thanks for clarifying, maybe more than I want.
I wanna do a little bit of clarity.
Yes, thank you. But I will concur with Simone, I will support what the majority goes with.
Okay, so, we had several of the committee members here, so, Mr. Brazier? Since you started the presentation, I don't wanna call you out, sir. So, do you have a, a perspective on one or multiple props?
It's like an option, I bet, now I'm gonna scratch my ankle on that call. So, as far as the committee goes, we did not really discuss one or multiple propositions. It was held at some side of conversations, things like that. But as far as the committee, we did not bring a recommendation for that. We left that duty and chore up to the board. That's my opinion.
All right, I'm gonna ask you point blank, yeah, I know, you live here, you work here, you have a large family here.
Both of you are props.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who else? Do you have an opinion? Just relax.
Okay, so. Can you hear me? Okay. So, I wanted the multiple in the beginning, but as I learned more in how the funds kind of are able to move, I think one is the smartest way to go. Even if the community has said, some of the community has said multiple props, I think I just think one's the best way to go.
If there's any committee member who would like to speak to this question at hand, please feel free to come forward and share your opinion about multi versus single propositions. I know, I, I know that seems that it could open up a big can of worms, but I think that we should give the committee a chance to, to offer their opinions. I'd want to hear just from two people, if one of you would want to share their opinion.
Can I clarify something a little bit? Just, when we're talking about one, one prop and the money, we use terms like move around, flexibility, you know, I just wanna clarify that, that if, if there, if there were additional, if the budget came in smaller on one project and one came in larger on another, we can move it from, from that one to the other, but we can't. We don't have flexibility or freedoms to just, you know, add things in that the voters never voted for. We couldn't, you know, use it for locker rooms, for instance, you know, we can't. I just wanna clarify that, and am I understanding that correctly?
I would offer that consider it as managing it as one pot of money versus separate individual pots of money for whatever they're designated for. And it puts a different management workload on Spencer from, again, this amount of money, whatever it is, associated with a given prop is limited to just that.
Yeah, but if it's one, it's everything within that.
Every statement that I heard recommended.
That's right.
That's gonna be managed within that one bucket of money.
Absolutely, okay.
For, to answer your question, if you read the ballot language, it's purposely vague, and it lists a lot of things that can be used with the bond money. Really, the only exclusion is for sporting facilities. So, anything other than a stadium or a basketball arena, we can use them based on what the wording of the proposition is.
So, we could use them to educate our kids?
I'm just saying, yes, it can be shifted around, and the district can add or subtract. As we saw with the 2021 bond, there's only exclusions for sporting facilities.
There's actually exclusions for lots of facilities, because it is, it's whatever we have on the ballot language, which is specifically things that the committee has brought forward. And I'll give you a great example. Legacy Elementary was built in 1939. When we start checking out that plumbing, there's a good chance we might run into something. If that were to go, if that, if that project were to go on a little over budget, and another project was under budget, then, of course, with, with the knowledge of the board, we could, it would be just like a budget amendment, you could move money from here to there to help out. And yes, and with one prop, yes, only, only what is, was what the committee has recommended. Ms. Pinkerton, do you have a perspective on one or multi?
Well, originally, we kind of, in the committee, the group that I was in, we talked about having multiple, doing renovations in one, and then the middle school and maybe transportation in the other. But then we got to talk in about, well, are we gonna say that a rookie roof that's leaking is not important, and then a middle school to house these new people that we need, is that more important than fixing the leaky roofs? I mean, there's things that, the reason why we're calling this bond is because it's all important. We need it. We have leaky roofs in the middle school that's causing mold and growing on the ceilings and the walls. We have foundational issues, because in the, my room, and I've showed Mr. Sheverson, my room has lines, you can see where the pipe is, and it's growing all the mold from condensation that's happening underneath the foundation. That's important. We don't need me or another, or students or any other, anybody else there to have be in that, that situation where you're possibly getting sick from being, having a mold problem. That's an issue, and that's renovation, but we also are, I just told y'all, we are very close to being a capacity at our, at our campus, and we don't even have sixth graders at our campus yet. We don't have a place to put them there. We need that, that other, that other building. So, there's a lot of, yes, we talked about there's not any wants. These are all extreme needs that we need.
That should have been done in 2021.
And so, I think it's important that we maybe put it all together, because I'm afraid that we get in digging into the middle school, and we're gonna find a lot more that we can't see on the outside when we get into the inside. There's a lot, a lot of issues there. And so, I think it's important that we put it all together.
Thank you. Any other community member?
Good evening. So, I hear the back and forth, and it is very complicated, but one of the things that keeps sticking in my mind kind of focuses around the addition to the middle school. And so, if we took that $63 million and we put it here, and we take everything else that's renovation and need, why I feel that it could, should be to, for that money, was enough parents that were at our tables with sixth graders hadn't reconciled yet their kids being a part of a middle school-type campus. And like, one of the moms shared with us, right now, her sixth grader walks over to Legacy and can stay with the YMCA. She does not feel that her sixth grader was ready to go home and, I guess in our terms, be a latchkey kid at home. But will the YMCA move over here and be there for that sixth-grade campus? So, I, I feel like separating it would also let us hear from the community on how comfortable they are with putting sixth graders in a little more grown-up environment than where they're at. And the other thing that resonated with me as we talked, we have, we're investing in our elementary schools, and you have kids coming from Pleasant View who are in these great, pretty schools, and then you've got this middle school that, I don't wanna say it's a dump, but it's the middle child. the middle child. It doesn't get new clothes, it's not getting the new things, but they can look out the door and they can see this fancy school. And sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that's when, like, you're figuring out life. And then you're sitting in this school that is not up to par with anything on either side of you. And so, again, I think we have to invest in that, because I feel like that's important to those kids, to have something to take ownership in and be proud during one of the hardest times of their life and not show them, oh, you are just the middle child. And so I think it should be too, because I think we still need to learn more about the sixth grade campus.
So for clarity, if I can follow up, Parker, do you recommend the, the repairs at Legacy, at R G B, obviously R V G, and then the repairs at the existing middle school all be grouped together? And then only the new addition at the middle school be a separate?
Yes, that is my opinion from the school because of it. I do think on the buses, the buses are critical. We listen to parents talk about all of that, so I do feel the buses are very important. I don't, yes, the traffic is the traffic, but could that even be split apart so that the money going for concrete and stuff is viewed a little different than providing the buses and making sure that our kids can go to activities and can get to another school?
All right. Can I ask a question, Dr. Dear? With that, with, so I have a new seventh grader. I said that, and I have two more that'll come up that'll go through sixth grade, and I'm on the fence too. I mean, I've been a teacher and I've seen the awkwardness of sixth grade and junior high all the things, but I'm curious, I don't know, if we were to, based on that apprehension, is there even any way to keep the sixth graders separate long-term anyway? Or, you know what I'm saying?
Where they're at now?
Yeah, not where they're at now. I know that we're going to outgrow that campus, but I'm just saying, if, if that's the big community concern about.
Right, so we, we've heard a lot of, a lot of feedback from moms nervous about the sixth graders. So that's why we, when we're thinking about the design, to intentionally pretty much put the sixth graders in the current middle school. And then the way we design it, I mean, we're not going to design it with all these hallways plugged in. There'll be a standalone, standalone, but they'll still get the shared facilities. So the plan is they would, they would only, they'd only mix when we intentionally want them to. Because you might, you might need that for, well, maybe band, I mean, you wouldn't for athletics, but just, just for different activities.
Okay, let me rephrase, because I hear what you're saying, and I ask these same questions. Let me ask a follow-up with, do we have land capacity, capability, anything at some point to have them separate if we were to wait on this? Or is the eventual, it's probably going to have to be put there no matter what anyway because of our land restriction or whatever? That just would extend it out and be more expensive later if we're waiting on, you follow what I'm saying?
We have land, and if, you're right, if we, if we do it later, it's just that much more expensive.
But there's never going to be a plan, or, not that there's never, but right now, there's potentially not ever really going to continue to say just the sixth grade campus. Whether we do this now, whether we do it later, even if we did it later, we're not going to build.
That is not a long-range plan.
A standalone.
Yes, ma'am.
Right?
Correct, but we do intentionally want to design it so we can separate it.
Yes, and I agree with that fully, but.
Yeah, I was just going to chime in. I'm understanding that it's basically a separate wing.
Yes.
Just the sixth graders, and then your seventh and eighth graders would have their, a separate wing from the sixth grade.
Thank you.
So, as you can tell by the number of people that have come up here with varying opinions, all of us that sat on that long-range planning committee, we had our opinions, we're laws, we're members of the community. It was not an echo chamber, and we learned a lot of things. We learned a lot of facts. And, but despite all of that, despite our opinions, despite the discussion, and believe me, there was discussion, there was debate, there were hard questions asked. I mean, my kids are at Y M C A, so I don't give away maybe who I am. But we all came to the conclusion that this bond for this amount for these things were the needs. And I say that because we were educated, we looked into it, we looked at the research, and we came to that conclusion. So I think that one bond is the way to go, or one prop versus multiple is the way to go, because we've looked at those facts, we've looked at the needs. And like someone said, it's bare bones, it's not ones, it's not, I mean, I'm a, I'm a theater girl. Give me a stage, like, I would love it. But you don't see that in, in this bond proposition, because there are ones. There are needs for our kids so that they can have a successful education.
Thank you. Ms. Dorr, may I ask your question, sixth graders would still get to vote at Y M C A?
Okay, and since you just outed yourself on being that parent, I'm going to ask you, would you vote no if we continued forward with the plan to put the sixth grade at the middle school? Would that one thing that you have concern about that's valid, would that sway your vote against everything else?
It would not sway my vote for the whole proposition, but if given two, I would only vote yes for the other, and I would not vote for the middle school.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so, great dialogue. First of all, again, thank you guys for working with me, trying to help. I, I think it's very important that we're able to look at this from all different angles and, and bring forward different thoughts. So, Dr. Dear, I, I know you and I talked about potentially having some pros and cons. Would you have something to carry ship? So, Mr. Stevenson's asked me just to share some different possible scenarios. So this is pretty much everything we've talked about, everything on one prop. If they were separated into two props, we need it separated into three props. So this is just, so you can see numbers in the, in the projects that were recommended. So in the wording of, that would be put on the, the ballot, what level of detail would be provided on there as to what it was intended for?
Is there, is there, are these the only options if we work it out?
I, I don't think these are the only options. I have Dr. Dear to provide some different scenarios for us to just have different thoughts. But again, on various pros and cons of, if you were to package certain things together, I'm hearing that, again, cons all the way around. So we will have to get to a, a point where we will have to make a decision on that momentarily. I was trying to step us through the next step here of what might be on the ballot. And as you can see by what Dr. Dear provided, it does call out high-level things like construction improvements, equipment for school facilities, safety, security enhancements. And we will communicate out very detailed what is planned, as we've already talked about, Mr. Mitter and our communication plan.
Looking at the different scenarios, the scenario one through five, I think I could support scenario one or five. I don't know if anybody else has any opinions about that?
Quick glance, quick glance, I'm leaning the same thing. I think I lean toward scenario one, but I could support, I think, scenario five.
After hearing a, a lot of our points and the other points, I'm kind of leaning towards one, one proposition, because I fear that, well, I, I just lean towards one.
So for communities understanding, the scenarios that was just referenced, scenario one was one proposition altogether. Scenario five as referenced had addition to the middle school as one prop, all the renovations as a second prop, and then the buses and the traffic as a third prop. Again, just for your own certification.
And I'm going to go ahead and complete my sentence. I fear that if we do separate props, you're going to have some confusion and that things that we desperately need are going, and people are going to be like, well, we can save a little bit of money by not getting new buses, and that's just as big of a need as getting rid of mold in Mrs. Pinkerton's classroom, in my opinion. So that's why I, I'm going to go ahead and say that I fully support one prop.
So I, I do think that voters and the general public like options.
Right.
I think, people like options, consumers like options, options are good. I think the time for options, i.e. the props, as it pertains to bonds, are in there are ones, as, as a part of it. If we had a, if we had the, the theater, if we had the different things that we would love to have as a district, if that was on the ballot, I would say the responsible thing to do and to appeal to our voter, the community would be to, to separate those and give them as an additional prop. But given that these are all just bare bone, to take Krista's term, bare bone needs, I, I think ones, I don't know how you get away from just doing one, because it's all the needs, and we're going to do ones in here.
Is there anybody who cannot get behind one, one proposition?
I appreciate all of the discussion on it.
Can I, can I make a motion here to?
I am happy to.
Can I make a motion? To, to approve an order calling bond in the district on November 4th with one proposition, proposition A in the amount of 119, oh, 957,000.
One second.
I have a motion about Jeff and a section about Terry. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? Motion passes six to one. Next on the agenda, item C, we are going.